Good evening, welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of September 19th, 2013. I am City Council President Bill Dwight and I will be presiding. Before we start, I'd like to take a moment and note with sadness the passing of Ray Ellerbrook, who was essentially a Northampton institution and one of our ideal students -- citizens. Ray's contributions to Northampton are incalculable and so is the enormity of our loss and the loss of his family. Our condolences to his family and I'm confident I speak for everyone here that our gratitude as well as for his selfless devotion to our community. Yes, Ray died yesterday, so... And thank you. Thank you for that moment. The -- what we do in the council meeting is before we convene in regular session, we have public comment and the public's invited to speak on any topic. Hopefully it's germane, but it doesn't have to be. And you're allotted three minutes for time to speak and we ask that you honor that. We -- you're not going to be shut off dead at three minutes exactly, but please don't start on your next page or your next paragraph, just complete your thought, that'd be appreciated. When you step up, I'm going to call your name if you've signed up and then announce -- tell us your name and tell us your address and then speak your piece. And first up, we have Ann White.
Good evening, my name is Ann White. I live at 33 Northern Avenue and I'm the Development Director for ServiceNet here in Northampton and I'm here to talk to you about a wonderful day in the city called Shelter Sunday. We're in our 22nd year. This year it's on October 6th and it's in Plaski Park from 10 to 4:00. And it's funded by the Shelter Sunday Coalition, which is comprised of members of each of the six agencies that benefit from the money raised. Last year we raised over $50,000 with the help of over 100 community volunteers that come together on that day and canvass the streets and get fantastic donation and wonderful response because there's, you know, such good publicity beforehand, letting people know that you can rally at their door and the money goes to such a worthy cause. The six agencies that benefit are the Grove Street Inn, the Interfaith Shelter, the SRO Project here in town, Grace House and Safe Passage. And they go to essential emergency services, homeless shelter services and temporary -- and emergency housing services. So what I'm encouraging everyone here tonight is to see how they would like to participate, how they can participate, whether it's just making a donation with one of our easy donating packets with the envelope included and the detached donation form or whether they'd be willing to canvass in their neighborhood or just talk it up at the office or pass out these pamphlets to people that they know. So I'm hoping that you'll all participate. It really is a wonderful experience. It's been a wonderful experience for me to be part of this collaborative committee and I'm looking forward to a very successful year in our 22nd year. So I'd like to pass out brochures for anyone who doesn't have one and give Jane his date change.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ann. Next up, Amy Bookbinder, please.
The bad news for me is that I'm still recuperating from a bad back injury a week and a half ago. Probably shouldn't be here, but say lovely. The good news for you however is that tonight my remarks will therefore be brief. I learned this afternoon that Officer Borowski may be confirmed tonight as Lieutenant of the Northampton Police Department. My remarks about that are not meant in any way to be personal. I don't know him, he may be a very nice person. However, Office Borowski is the Northampton Police Department Officer who pepper sprayed Jonas Correa in the face, a young man of color, that awful night at Tully's Bar when Jonas did nothing but videotape an incident taking place there. Tully's, as we know, has since been censured by this city for repeated bad behavior. We know the DA dropped criminal charges against Correa, finding no cause for them, though the NPD is still pursuing civil charges. I applaud Counselor Adams and others on the council for hearing the concerns of Justice for Jonas, the NAACP, the ACLU and other members of the community about Jonas's violent arrest and for initiating city council discussions with the NPD about its protocols for use of force. Given all of the above, I request a no vote on confirming Officer Borowski as Lieutenant of our police department, when many in the community think his actions require further investigation with a possible demotion, not a promotion at this time. To promote this officer tonight would be a shameful action by this council, I believe, and one that I hope will not occur. In closing, again, my remarks are not at all personal. They're made in the interest of keeping all of us here in this community safe by acknowledging and applauding our city's responsible policing and not condoning unsafe policing. Thank you.
I'm going to break protocol here a little bit just to point out that we are not voting on any promotions. We don't -- the council doesn't have the authority over any administrative agencies in the city, so we won't be voting on these. This is a ceremony to acknowledge the promotions and the achievements of police officers in the line of duty, just for clarification. Next up is Vera Cage, please.
Hi, my name is Vera Cage from 12 Long Meadow Drive, Amherst, Mass., apartment number 21. I am probably one or the only person of color perhaps in this room and I just wanted to state that for the record and I'm here on behalf of Justice for Jonas and I wasn't sure I was going to speak. I think I wanted to observe the ceremony, the swearing in. I am also delighted to know that a longtime social justice activist is getting honored today, but it's bittersweet because it's also a day where the police officer who did pepper spray an innocent civilian will also be sworn in and as lieutenant, you know, a promotion. I came to the United States in 1980 when I was six years old and I think I've been fighting for social justice ever since. And I majored in sociology at the University of Massachusetts because I wanted to know why things are the way they are. And today, September 19th, 2013, I wanted to observe why change is so slow, why, you know, progress takes time. And I guess I want to thank the folks that have stood by me, that have supported me and others like me to have the courage to speak up and to speak out. Because I do live in Amherst and I come frequently to Northampton, but now I'm going to second guess coming because I don't know how a community can just gloss over the fact that an injustice has been done. Yes, it's to one individual, but it's a pattern, it's beyond Jonas, it's more than Jonas. So I just want to speak to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Elliot Fratkin, please.
Good evening, I'm Elliot Fratkin of 24 Massasoit Street in Northampton and I just want to say what a great honor it is to be here with Arce Markham and for Arce to be here with us. Arce celebrated her 98th birthday on June 21st. We are very pleased with the proclamation honoring Arce's social activism or political commitment to our community where she's been a resident since 1971 by the mayor, the Human Rights Commission and the city council. This Saturday, we're honoring Arce with a celebration at Smith College Conference Center. At 4:30 to 7:00, we invite everyone to attend. And part of our purpose is to raise funds for the Markham Nathan Fund for Social Justice, which was founded by Arce and Marty Nathan and gives small grants to social activist groups in the community. I just want to say in addition to the hoopla justly congratulating Arce and express my own feelings that Arce is a wonderful person, a very loving person and a very smart person. And I'm just very happy that she's able to be here with us for this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carol Reinhardt, please.
Good evening, I'm Carol Reinhardt and I live at 105 Blackbirds Trail in Florence and I'm co-chair of the Northampton Human Rights Commission. So I simply want to say a simple word in the commission's support for the proclamation that is to be read this evening declaring September 21st Arce Markham Day. You know, we go by the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, which begins with the recognition that the inherent dignity and equal and inalienable rights of all members of the human family, that is the foundation of freedom, justice and peace in the world. And that sums up, I think, the motivations and the choices that Arce Markham has made in her near century of life and work on this planet and so much of that in the city of Northampton. Such a role model is dearly important always to us, something important, a rare gift that is for us, for our children, as a representative of the kind of life that we each in our own ways aspire to achieve, I think, and that Arce has, you know, she's done this in a humble way, not someone who chose what she does or did to be recognized. And yet I give thanks that people like Arce Markham offer their strong shoulders on which the rest of us can stand. Thank you for honoring Arce tonight.
Thank you. That's all who signed up. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at this time? Thank you very much. I'll clap -- let's see, I'll have the clerk call the roll, please, and Bean.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Carney?
Present.
Here.
Counselor Freeman-Daniels?
Here.
Counselor Mark?
Present.
Counselor Schwartz?
Here.
Here. Now, in the order of business, the aforementioned Arce Markham proclamation. This is the mayor's proclamation, so I'm going to ask the mayor to read this and present this to Arce. There you go. Well, there you go.
Good evening, counselors. Tonight I do indeed have a proclamation that I am issuing and it is entitled "Arce Markham Day, September 21st, 2013." Whereas Arce Markham has worked to protect and promote the human rights of vulnerable people throughout her career as a master's level social worker and whereas Arce Markham provided services to war veterans throughout her social work career. Whereas Arce Markham has been politically active throughout her life, including marching against the Korean War and the execution of the Rosenbergs, as well as working with anti-war groups in Northampton, demonstrating against nuclear weapons and promoting single payer healthcare. And whereas Arce Markham has volunteered with many local social justice organizations, including the American Friends Services Committee, where she was a co-organizer and chief fundraiser for the first Martin Luther King celebration in our city. And whereas Arce Markham has co-founded Social Workers for Peace and Justice, co-founded Franklin Hampshire Healthcare Coalition, which later helped to form MassCare, a statewide organization that continues to advocate for single payer healthcare, co-founded the Middle East Peace Coalition in 1987, helped to create the Northampton Bill of Rights Defense Committee and the Alliance for Peace and Justice, created with Marty Nathan the Markham Nathan Fund for Social Justice to fund grassroots organizations that push for social justice. And whereas Arce Markham has been named Democrat of the Year and been honored by the National Priorities Project, the Massachusetts American Civil Liberties Union and MassCare for unwavering social justice work. And whereas Arce Markham's friends and colleagues are gathered today to honor her life's work that have been dedicated to championing human rights. Now therefore I, Mayor David Narcoitz, do hereby proclaim September 21st, 2013, to be Arce Markham Day in the city of Northampton. Let us celebrate her 98th birthday and honor her lifetime of activism for social justice. In witness whereof, I have set my hand and imprinted the city's seal this 19th day of September, Mayor David J. Narcoitz. So it's a great privilege to issue this proclamation and--
Wow. Well, this is just wonderful and by the way, it's not my birthday.
No.
My birthday's June 21st and I was born in 1915. That's thousands of years ago. But here I am. And I can't tell you how pleased I am to be part of this wonderful, wonderful city. And anyway, thank you very much. This was just wonderful.
Thank you, Arce.
I wish my mother and father were here, they would be so. Thank you again.
And thank you, Arce, and I'm sorry about the chairs. Actually, I apologize to everyone in the room about the chairs. Fair enough. Next up, we have -- now we have the swearing in of police officers and departmental awards, so I imagine there's a small crowd outside. Chief, you're here.
More than a small crowd, Mr. President.
Okay.
So give us a few minutes to--
Assemble.
Gather the involved officers and family. Like I was saying, I feel in--
That's fine. Don't worry, you don't need to sing. We're all grateful for the opportunity, but just the same.
Safe poetry.
We've heard you sing.
I mean, I've never -- I've never-- Are you going to be able to fit everybody in, you think?
Probably not, but we're going to try.
Okay, all right. You guys are welcome to move up front too, if you want, and there's some chairs and stuff.
Fill in because there's a lot of people behind you.
It's fine, we're about near the occupation -- oxygen occupation capacity here, so if everyone starts feeling lightheaded--
Chief, we're all set.
Yeah, okay. Hold your breath.
Fill in as much as you can. Family, family and friends, there's more seats up here if you want to fill in.
Would you guys find parking? Oh, that's right. You have a garage.
We got this clown bus.
Okay.
There's some seats up here.
There's just some -- you get to sit next to the mayor.
Fill in, fill in.
All right. Those are slowly squeezing in. Thank you all for giving us this opportunity, not only to introduce you to some new supervisor of our department, but to do our annual awards. You know, it's a department I'm very proud of. There's so many things that happen that our officers get involved in. Our awards process is a peer recommended process. Some of the awards get recommended for a higher level and it seems because of the modesty of so many of my people, they always knock them down a notch, but it's important that they get the recognition that they do. It's also an opportunity for, just over a year after we've occupied our building, for me to again express my thanks to not only the city council, the mayor and the citizens that are watching tonight. It's just a world of difference that we've been working in in the past 13 months and it's my appreciation and the opportunity for my officers, I believe, that would give the citizens and the council a big round of applause for the building that we built. It's worked out so well, so thank you so much. So first, let me just start by saying there's been some supervisor changes in department. Detective Lieutenant Ken Watson, who's been here before in front of you, chose to retire earlier this year. He announced it in January and left in June. And as part of the reorganization, Lieutenant Jody Casper, who was a 15-year veteran of the police department, who worked as a patrol officer, a field training officer and a detective prior to being promoted to sergeant in 2007. She was promoted to lieutenant in 2011 and with the retirement of Ken Watson, has been chosen to replace him as a detective lieutenant in charge of the bureau. Lieutenant Casper has two master's degrees, both from Westfield State Criminal Justice and Public Administration. She is currently an adjunct faculty member at Elms College in Chicopee. She has received numerous awards and commendations from the department. Lieutenant Casper has represented the department in lecturing in various criminal investigative matters for a number of agencies throughout the region and has been published nationally in several criminal justice articles in various law enforcement agencies, magazines. So while this isn't technically a promotion that needs to be sworn in, it's your opportunity to meet the new face of the detective bureau, Lieutenant Jody Casper. And if you'd like to say a few words and shake the hands of the city council, you're more than welcome.
There's a lot of us here, so I just want to say thank you very much. Thank you, of course, for the new beautiful building that it's my privilege to work in. It's been a privilege to work for the city so far and I'm looking forward to the rest of my career with Northampton, so thank you all.
The next is a swearing in. Lieutenant Alan Borowski is a 15-year veteran of the department. He spent nearly six years in the detective bureau as a general investigator. Prior to his selection as a detective, he was certified patrol field training officer for two years. He was promoted to sergeant in 2010 where he was a field training and evaluation program supervisor. Lieutenant Borowski has an associate's degree from Hoyou Community College and a bachelor's degree from Curry College, both in criminal justice. He has received numerous letters of thanks from the public as well as several departmental awards and commendations. He is currently assigned to the shift commander for the 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM shift and this is a swearing in. This is an appointment of the mayor and the clerk. If you'd like to step up, set up wherever you need to. Lieutenant? Do you want to take a picture? Get up and take a picture. Family-friendly event here. His mouth's here.
May he be after me. I, Alan C. Borowski.
I, Alan C. Borowski.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of lieutenant in the Northampton Police Department.
Of lieutenant in the Northampton Police Department.
In accordance with the rules and laws of the police department.
In accordance with the rules and laws of the police department.
The Constitution of this commonwealth.
The Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the ordinances of the city of Northampton.
And the ordinances of the city of Northampton.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Video with Veronica Campfire. Now, we need a few more moments here to--
Did Scott bring his stuff?
Oh, we got two boxes.
Okay.
As I said earlier, the awards are peer reviewed, peer recommended, and we don't take the awards lightly. We don't issue these awards immediately after events. We wait to make sure that they're successful prosecutions and some of those involve that. So some of these seem like they're from the past, but we're finally at a point of closure for many and the final one that we will go through will make sense to you. So for 2012, Certificate of Commendation. Detective Timothy Sidkowski, Detective Corey Robinson, Detective Michael Briggs, Staff Sergeant John Carlyd, Sergeant Alan Borowski, sorry, Lieutenant Alan Borowski, Officer David Netto, Officer Donald Nichols, Officer Thomas Briada and Officer Brent Ziallo. If they're all lined up there, I can't -- I don't have eyes in the back of my head unfortunately, but-- On February 2nd, 2012, officers responded to Florence Savings Bank for a bank alarm while en route officers were notified that the bank had actually been robbed. Through combined investigation effort between the Patrol Division and Detective Bureau, the suspects were identified and subsequently taken into custody. All the involved officers are thus being awarded a certificate of commendation. And again, if we can hand those out individually, Captain?
David.
And you make sure the hands of the city counselors.
Donald?
Thanks.
Thank you.
How's it going, buddy? I got to edit this as I go along here. As you know, we built a new facility, we designed a room in for physical fitness equipment. We didn't have the money to actually put the equipment in, so during their off-duty time, both Casper and Borowski took the initiative to create a fitness room in the new police station by organizing fundraisers, gathering donations, designing and eventually equipping the fitness room. And it's really a nice facility for all the officers to work out in. So this letter of merit recognizes each of you, Lieutenant Casper, Lieutenant Borowski, for your dedication to the department and its employees. And it does get a lot of good use.
Let's see again. I mean, and honestly, they, partly, I think about $10,000 in donations, went to bankruptcy sales at other fitness places, got $30,000 worth of equipment. It's just donations from some of our local fitness centers, so it was a really good effort on their part. This is a certificate of commendation for officers Carney, Dumis, Letzison and Morgan and Sergeant Caputo. And I'll read this as they come up. On July 17th, 2012, these officers responded to Meadowbrook Apartments for a report of a female who had been stabbed and for a male who was attempting to start the apartment on fire. Upon arrival, they found the male suspect was still armed and had locked himself inside a bedroom. Using verbal commands in their training, they were able to get the male suspect to exit the bedroom and the officers were then able to place him into custody. Both the suspect and the female victim were rendered medical aid prior to medical personnel arriving unseen. Their actions that evening prevented further injury to the victim as well as other residents living in the building with the aforementioned fire that was started. Therefore, they are being awarded a certificate of commendation. Therefore, they are being awarded a certificate of commendation.
Chris Dumis. Sergeant Caputo.
Congratulations, partner. How are you, Mr.? Very well. This is a certificate of commendation for Detective Robinson. Detective Robinson's investigation to the Walgreen Pharmacy robberies, two of which occurred in Florence, expanded up into Franklin County and down to Hampton County. Corey was diligent about chasing down as much information as he could, and as a result, he was able to gather evidence in other jurisdictions and assisted them in solving several other similar-type robberies, oxycodone robberies out of pharmacies, both in Agawam, West Springfield, Greenfield, I can't remember the other one, Springfield, Agawam. Keep going. That's it? Okay. And other jurisdictions, as well as recovery of evidence.
And Hadley.
Involved in all the cases. It was really a lot of work that he did. He helped a lot of other agencies out, so therefore, he is being awarded the certificate of commendation for his relentless and outstanding efforts in these investigations. And don't go too far, and I forgot, I should have done these together. This is also a letter of commendation for Detective Robinson. Corey's one of our two internet ITAC.
ICA.
ICA. Can't remember the acronym. There's so many acronyms in our business nowadays. But basically, he does spend time with another detective Moody on the internet, chasing down and looking at sexual exploitation, child abuse victims, and has had a fair amount of success in that. He's also a resource based on his knowledge and Moody's knowledge, as well as the fact that we were able to leverage a fairly substantial grant from the federal government that has a pretty substantial forensic unit in the Police Department. Were used by other departments. We actually, when DEA and ATF has something they need right away, we can turn around quicker. Corey can turn around quicker than the FBI crime lab, so they come up and use our resources as well. So for his continued expertise in computer forensic work and his tireless efforts conducting the sex offender audits, which is another part of his job, Sergeant McMahon also is responsible for, we have to go out and check all the registered sex offenders, the 160-some-odd?
Correct.
Give or take a few in Northampton to confirm that their information is valid. We're required to do it by the state and funded by the state to do that, but we feel it's very important to conduct those. So Sergeant McMahon does that work, Corey does that work. But nonetheless, Sergeant McMahon wrote a letter of commendation for Detective Robinson, and that says further word tonight, and I think we don't have to go through handshaking. Shaking his hand before everything's...
Good work, Corey.
This is a certificate of commendation, Sergeant Borowski. Officers Margay, Cole, Sotolato, Letzison, Golick, Granitzus, and Detective Sitkowski. This is on November 13th, 2012. These officers responded to Service Section 12 on a male. The male eventually armed himself with a spear and then barricaded himself in a room. Using verbal commands in their training, plus their defensive tactics, the officers were able to take the male into custody, preventing injury to the male and themselves. Due to all their actions that day, they urge being awarded a certificate of commendation.
Phil Golick?
Starting to roll here, buddy.
Well, Margay? Andrew Cole?
Thank you.
This again is a certificate of commendation, Officers Gregory, Dimitrian, LeBrun, and Dispatchers Gilbert and Cronin. This is called November 16th, 2012. These officers responded to domestic disturbance where several individuals reported to be armed with weapons. Upon arrival, it was discovered that individuals on the third floor was possibly armed with a rifle. The scene was secured by these officers, and the perimeter was maintained. Through the investigation, the officers were able to determine who the aggressor was, and they eventually took that party into custody without further incident. The dispatcher's involvement, while on scene, the officers advised the dispatchers that there was possibly an armed individual on the third floor. The dispatchers were able to do the research and make phone contact with this male, and eventually helped the officers to convince him to put down the weapon he had possession of and turn himself into officers on the scene. So their actions combined, dispatchers and police, that night prevented further injury to all involved, including the officers on scene. As a result, both dispatchers and the officers are being recognized with a certificate of commendation.
Will LeBrun? Victor Dimitrian? Scott Gregory? Dispatches here, Gilbert and Cronin?
Are they working? They must be working. The dispatchers are working tonight. We can pull the officers off the street, but we can't take the call takers out of the dispatch center, which is unfortunate, because dispatchers, so much works so greatly, working with their officers, the things that they deal with on the phone, the communications that they put forward to the officers on the street, the relationship that my officers and the dispatchers have, there's, it's just uncanny and well-appreciated to everybody, so... This is the Meritorious Service Award. Officer Cole. On December 21st, 2012, Officer Cole was involved in an off-duty incident on his way home from work in Hoyouk where he came upon a motor vehicle accident. The vehicle eventually caught on fire with three individuals trapped inside. Without concern for his own personal safety, Officer Cole was able to extricate one of the occupants prior to the arrival of any other emergency response. Once assistance did arrive, Officer Cole continued to assist with the extrication of the other passengers. Due to his actions that evening, Officer Cole is hereby awarded the Meritorious Service Medal. And this is the final award. This is the Unit Citation Award for the following dispatchers. Megan Connor, Kelly Woods, Nina Barsh. That's why I forgot one. Okay, I did skip one. Reset. Meritorious Service Award, Officers Sotolato and Margay. On May 23rd, 2012, Officers Margay and Sotolato responded to Florence Heights for a suicidal female who was armed with a knife. The female held the knife to her own throat several times during the protracted incident. Through verbal commands in their training, they were able to convince the female to eventually put the knife down, preventing injury to the suicidal female and to themselves. Through those actions that evening, they are being awarded the Meritorious Service Medal. So Officers Sotolato and Margay. The last one, and if I get a catch in my throat, that's, you'll understand why. This is the Unit Citation Award for the following. Dispatchers Megan O'Connor, Kelly Woods, Nina Barsh, Melissa Nazaro, who's now the supervisor of dispatch in Springfield, and Christine Voitka, who, I don't know where she's working, but she was working that night. Supervisors Anne McMahon, Dorothy Clayton, John Carlich, Andrew Trushaus, retired and retired Lieutenant Richard Rogowski, who came here tonight, and I haven't seen him in a while, so it's nice to see his face. Officers Christian Edler, Justin Hooton, Kenneth Kirchner, Joshua Wallace, Robert Moriarty, Donald Nichols, Joseph Barsh, Gregory Henick, Paul Wigmore, who traveled from his new job in Central Mass, and Brian D'Amico. Detectives Corey Robinson, Craig Kerwak, Alan Borowski, and Deidre Yasutoma, who also has left the department. And the Crime Scene Services, David Callahan, David Netto, and Timothy Sitkowski. And Gregory Henick. I'm sorry, did I read his name? Because he also traveled. He was changing in the parking lot when I pulled in, so... Don't ask me about that. On December 27th, 2009, one of the darkest nights in Northampton, we suffered a rash of suspicious fires that were later determined to be intentionally set, resulting in not only thousands of dollars in property loss, but the tragic loss of two lives. From the dispatchers fielding the multitude of calls and the dispatching of the police and the fire units, to the responding officers and subsequent lengthy follow-up of both supervisory officers and detectives, and it was a lengthy, protracted investigation. We had concerns about the security of the city. We had surveillance. We were, it's unbelievable, the things that people did, hour after hour after hour over several, several days. But the cohesive and professional work of all involved was both noteworthy and commendable. The end result of this investigation, culminating in a successful prosecution and conviction of the suspect early this year, so therefore, in recognition, all these individuals, before you are hereby awarded the Northampton Police Department Unit Citation Award.
Kelly Woods?
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Christine Voitka?
Thanks for coming. So what are you doing? No?
No.
Dorothy Clay?
You'll see Greg traveled a long way just for this.
He doesn't.
Donald Nichols?
Oh, yeah.
Moriarty? Joshua Wallace?
How's it going, buddy?
Kenneth Kirchner? Alan Borowski? Detective David Callahan?
Jesse said she'll carry all the... Oh, your mom's here, you're awesome. How's it going? Nice to see you, bud.
Good job.
Inspector Corey Robinson?
Nice job.
Craig Kerwak?
Hey, how's it going? Thank you.
Yeah, you look better.
Nice job, nice job.
So before closing, that's the awards that we are presenting here tonight. I will also note that several officers received Hampshire County EMS lifesaving awards. Included Detective Peter Fappiano, Officers Andrew Cole, Thomas Briada, Adam Van Buskirk, and Joshua Wallace. So again, thank you so much for giving us this opportunity to show you the faces of our new people. You see the officers and all the good work that they do, and the fact that they know that you appreciate that means the world to them, so thank you all.
We, very much. We appreciate the opportunity for this exchange, and it also reminds us of what it is that we expect from our police officers and what they deliver to, so thank you very much.
Believe me, there's far more other events that never even make the cut because they're so modest, but...
I was listening to the scanner last night. They're very busy.
They're always busy, so, thank you all, have a good night, hope you get out of here before 11:00.
That was hump day. Wait till Friday night.
Can we call, Jack, can we get a recess?
Yeah, we're gonna recess for a bit, let everyone...
Two minutes?
Two minutes to recess, please, thank you.
I couldn't find my password to my...
You couldn't find your password?
electrical upgrades, project funded from the FY 2011, apple plant is no longer needed for that purpose, and it's hereby reprogrammed to be used for Memorial Hall flooring and painting upgrades.
Move to approve.
Second it.
So, this is a motion to recommend to the general counsel.
Yep.
Okay, do you want to hear from the mayor before we vote, or?
Yeah. I would like to recognize the mayor, please.
There he is. Hi.
I think I am under your rules, so.
I recognize you.
He's perpetually recognized.
And also, Mr. Pomerantz is here as well. But this is essentially some, some electrical upgrades were programmed for, and when the monies were, were actually spent on the upgrades, they actually were inadvertently spent out of the central services budget itself and not out of this fund. And so, these funds remain there. So, what we're asking to essentially reprogram them to some other needed repairs in Memorial Hall that would be paid for traditionally out of the O&M budget of the central services department. There's some other additional flooring and painting upgrades that need to be done. So, that's the reason for asking to now move this money into the regular central services budget.
So, these aren't tailings left over from a job?
That's correct, yeah. And Mr. Pomerantz is here. He can explain to you the work that was done as part of the upgrades if you need to.
And actually, accept a motion to recognize Ed Pomerantz?
Accept the motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Now, on the late file, this is the, this will require a suspension.
Suspend Rule 38. Second.
All those in favor suspending rules, accepting the late file, the submission of these minutes, all please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. These are new appointments. This is Patricia Healy of 21 Longfellow Drive, in place of term 2013, from September 2013 to June 2015, from the unexpired term of Netto, and Elaine Reel, 12 East Street, Northampton, term starting at April 2013 and ending April 2016, filling the expired term of Marco Wells.
Still moved.
I'm abstaining.
Second. Okay, so it's moved and seconded, and there's any?
Yes, the committee met with both Patricia Healy and Elaine Reel. And first of all, I want to thank Counsel LeBarge for, and this isn't just encouraging any of these folks, but Counsel LeBarge through the years has encouraged a lot of people to be on committees. It didn't dawn on me until recently how, how much work she has done on that. So, I would just want to thank her, and it came back this time as well. We did not, you'll see that we are not moving Patricia Healy's name forward with a, neither recommending nor not recommending because we didn't have a quorum. Counsel LeBarge abstained for that vote, and there were just two of us there. We, I did interview her during that period. I would recommend her highly. I certainly would have voted to recommend. Great candidate. We did move forward Elaine Reel's name. We were able to vote on that, and we voted to move it forward with the recommendation. And I want to thank the two of them for coming in. We had a great conversation with both of them. And counsel on aging has just gotten two great people for that committee.
Counsel Freeman.
Just to clarify, Counsel, they both, they both came to that committee meeting? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or any of the discussion?
Yes, Counselor. I would like to separate the votes, please, so I have the opportunity to vote on one.
Okay, all right. The request is separate votes. So, first, we'll work on the nomination of Patricia Healy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Abstain.
And no? And one abstention? Okay. And now, we're voting on Elaine Reel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions there? And thank you both for your stepping up. We're gonna recess the finance committee. Commissioner Murphy is not present today, and so I'll be chairing the finance committee. So, we're assessing and then we're convening, and I'll ask the clerk to call the votes.
Yes.
Here.
First up is financial order for, this is to, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narckowitz, the $10,000 appropriated on September 16, 2010 for the memorial hall electrical upgrades, project funded from the FY 2011, apple plant is no longer needed for that purpose, and it's hereby reprogrammed to be used for memorial hall flooring and painting upgrades.
Move to approve.
Second it.
Okay, so this is a motion to recommend to the general counsel. Okay, do you want to hear from the mayor before we vote, or?
Yeah. I would like to recognize the mayor, please.
There he is. Hi.
I think I am under your rules, so.
I recognize you.
He's perpetually recognized.
And also, Mr. Pomerantz is here as well. But this is essentially some, some electrical upgrades were programmed for, and when the monies were, were actually spent on the upgrades, they actually were inadvertently spent out of the central services budget itself and not out of this fund. And so, these funds remain there. So, what we're asking to essentially reprogram them to some other needed repairs in Memorial Hall that would be paid for traditionally out of the O&M budget of the central services department. There's some other additional flooring and painting upgrades that need to be done. So, that's the reason for asking to now move this money into the regular central services budget.
Counsel Tacey?
So, these aren't tailings left over from a job?
That's correct, yeah. And Mr. Pomerantz is here. He can explain to you the work that was done as part of the upgrades if you need to.
And actually, accept a motion to recognize Ed Pomerantz?
Accept the motion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. These are new appointments. This is Patricia Healy of 21 Longfellow Drive, in place of term 2013, from September 2013 to June 2015, from the unexpired term of Netto, and Elaine Reel, 12 East Street, Northampton, term starting at April 2013 and ending April 2016, filling the expired term of Marco Wells.
Still moved.
I'm abstaining.
Second. Okay, so it's moved and seconded, and there's?
Yes, the committee met with both Patricia Healy and Elaine Reel. And first of all, I want to thank Counsel LeBarge for, and this isn't just encouraging any of these folks, but Counsel LeBarge through the years has encouraged a lot of people to be on committees. It didn't dawn on me until recently how, how much work she has done on that. So, I would just want to thank her, and it came back this time as well. We did not, you'll see that we are not moving Patricia Healy's name forward with a, neither recommending nor not recommending because we didn't have a quorum. Counsel LeBarge abstained for that vote, and there were just two of us there. We, I did interview her during that period. I would recommend her highly. I certainly would have voted to recommend. Great candidate. We did move forward Elaine Reel's name. We were able to vote on that, and we voted to move it forward with the recommendation. And I want to thank the two of them for coming in. We had a great conversation with both of them. And counsel on aging has just gotten two great people for that committee.
Counsel Freeman.
Just to clarify, Counsel, they both, they both came to that committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or any of the discussion?
Yes, Counselor. I would like to separate the votes, please, so I have the opportunity to vote on one.
Okay, all right. The request is separate votes. So, first, we'll work on the nomination of Patricia Healy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Abstain.
And no? And one abstention? Okay. And now, we're voting on Elaine Reel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions there? And thank you both for your stepping up. We're gonna recess the finance committee. Commissioner Murphy is not present today, and so I'll be chairing the finance committee. So, we're assessing and then we're convening, and I'll ask the clerk to call the votes.
Yes.
Here.
First up is financial order for, this is to, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narckowitz, the $10,000 appropriated on September 16, 2010 for the memorial hall electrical upgrades, project funded from the FY 2011, apple plant is no longer needed for that purpose, and it's hereby reprogrammed to be used for memorial hall flooring and painting upgrades.
Move to approve.
Second it.
Okay, so this is a motion to recommend to the general counsel. Okay, do you want to hear from the mayor before we vote, or?
Yeah. I would like to recognize the mayor, please.
There he is. Hi.
I think I am under your rules, so.
I recognize you.
He's perpetually recognized.
And also, Mr. Pomerantz is here as well. But this is essentially some, some electrical upgrades were programmed for, and when the monies were, were actually spent on the upgrades, they actually were inadvertently spent out of the central services budget itself and not out of this fund. And so, these funds remain there. So, what we're asking to essentially reprogram them to some other needed repairs in memorial hall that would be paid for traditionally out of the O&M budget of the central services department. There's some other additional flooring and painting upgrades that need to be done. So, that's the reason for asking to now move this money into the regular central services budget.
Counsel Tacey?
So, these aren't tailings left over from a job?
That's correct, yeah. And Mr. Pomerantz is here. He can explain to you the work that was done as part of the upgrades if you need to.
And actually, accept a motion to recognize Ed Pomerantz?
Accept the motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everybody.
This was a capital project. We had to replace the electric service coming into the rear memorial hall. We thought we were gonna need outside electrical contractors to do the work, and it turned out we were able to do most everything using our in-house electric staff. And as the mayor explained, the materials recovered out of the O&M budget for central services. So, we'd just like to sort of keep, take this money now and transfer it over for other work in memorial hall. But by doing it in-house, we did save a lot of money that we thought we'd have to go out, and we replaced the electric service that way.
That was my question. It was a cost-saving thing by doing it in-house.
As well, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel LeBarge?
Yes, so, this extra money that we have is gonna be used for doing what the request is, correct?
Interior renovations. So, we're talking flooring, painting, probably some electrical work inside the building, things of that nature.
Any further questions? All right, the motions are made to recommend.
Make a motion to recommend.
Well, it's already been made, so.
Oh.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I still approve. I know.
This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narckowitz, who we noticed is recognized. The council authorized payment of a prior fiscal year bill from FY 2013 for a boot allowance reimbursement for a DPW employee of FY 2014. Do you want to move it through, or do you want to hear from the mayor?
But we'd like to hear.
We'll recognize the mayor.
So, this is actually a similar fact pattern to some previous orders that we've put forward where essentially a bill has come forward that is an FY 2013 bill, and of course, we've now closed FY 2013. You may recall, we had a bill in the assessor's office for some computer work at one of your previous meetings. And so, in order now to pay this bill in FY 2014, we actually have to bring it before the council. So, this is actually a contractual reimbursement of a DPW employee as part of their uniform and equipment allowance. They submitted it on time. It didn't get paid correctly by the end of the fiscal year. So, we, it requires a vote of the council to actually pay this and reimburse the employee.
Counsel Tacey?
How much money is this?
It's 100 and, I think it's $50.
$150.
$150, yeah. Which is the, again, contractual amount that the boot, for the boot allowance.
Thank you.
Why, why are we authorizing $150? I'm just curious.
What's that again? We're just authorizing the payment of the bill.
Right, okay.
Because, again, it's a bill from a prior fiscal year. And, and MGL and DOR regulations require that if we're going to pay something that was a 2013 obligation, it actually has to come before you.
Part of the council's concern was if we were gonna be voting on every boot item, whether we would?
Not at all. No. Yeah, not at all. This is, as you know, this is, I think, we voted now on, I think, $350 out of a, you know, $76 million FY 13 budget. So, again, these are just some issues that can occur as the close of one fiscal year into the other.
Counsel Freeman, do you have a question?
Did someone get booted?
Oh. So said the lame duck.
It booted themselves. Now, we have to reimburse them.
Okay. All those in favor?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Tacey?
We're gonna have two readings. This is the council floor.
We could, if you want.
It would be helpful, again, this is.
Yeah.
An accounting issue.
Okay, I just wanted, and same with the last one, the 10,000. Okay, thank you.
So, actually, we haven't formally put this recommended, so if you want to make?
To the council.
Yeah, so you moved to recommend, and you seconded, and, okay. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Okay, there is a request on our financial order for two readings on that.
Right, when we get to the floor, we'll, we'll address that. Up next, a little steeper. This is upon the rec-
Now, on the late file, this is the, uh, um, this will require a suspension.
Suspend Rule 38. Second.
All those in favor of suspending rules, accepting the late file, the submission of minutes, all please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And now, I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. These are new appointments. This is, um, Patricia Healy of 21 Longfellow Drive, until the term 2013, uh, from September 2013 to June 2015, from the unexpired term of Mando, and Elaine Real, 12 East Street, North Hampton, term, uh, starting at April 2013, and ending April 2016, filling the expired term of Marco Wells.
Still moved.
I'm abstaining.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved and seconded, and there's, yeah, any?
Yes, the, uh, committee met with, uh, both Patricia Healy and Elaine Real, and first of all, I want to thank Council LaBarge for, um, and this isn't just encouraging, um, any of these folks, but Council LaBarge through the years have, has encouraged a lot of people to be on committees, and it, it didn't dawn on me until recently how, how much work she has done on that, so I would just want to thank her, and it came back this time as well. We did not, you'll see that we, we are not moving Patricia Healy's name forward with a, neither recommending, nor not recommending, because we didn't have a quorum. Uh, Council LaBarge abstained for that vote, and there were just two of us there. We, I did interview her during that period. I would recommend her highly. I certainly would have voted to recommend. Great candidate. Uh, we did move forward Elaine Real's, uh, name. We, we were able to vote on that, and, uh, we voted to move it forward with the recommendation, and I want to thank the two of them for coming in. We had a great conversation with both of them, and Council on Aging has just gotten two great people for that committee.
Council Freeman Daniels.
Just to clarify, Council, they both, they both came to that committee meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or any of the discussion?
Yes, um, Consular, I would like to separate the votes, please, so I've got the opportunity to vote on one.
Okay, alright. The request is separate votes, so first, we'll work on the nomination of Patricia Healy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
And no, and then one abstention. Okay. And now, we're voting on Elaine Real? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions there? And thank you both for your, uh, stepping up. We're gonna recess the finance committee, uh, Congressman Murphy is not present today, and so I'll be chairing the finance committee, uh, so we'll, we're assessing and then we're convening, and I'll ask the clerk to call the votes. Is he here?
Council LaBarge? Yes.
Here.
First up is, uh, financial order for, this is to, uh, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, the $10,000 appropriated on September 16th, 2010, for the Memorial Hall electrical upgrades, project funded from the FY 2011 apple plant, is no longer needed for that purpose, and is hereby reprogrammed to be used for Memorial Hall flooring and painting upgrades.
Move to approve.
Second it.
Okay, so this is a motion to recommend to the, the general council.
Yep.
Okay, do you want to hear from the mayor before we vote, or?
Yeah. I would like to rec, um, recognize the mayor, please.
There he is. Hi.
I think I am under your rules, so.
I recognize you.
He's perpetually recognized.
And also, Mr. Pomerantz is here as well, but, uh, this is essentially, um, some, some, uh, electrical upgrades were programmed for, um, and when the monies, uh, were, were, uh, actually spent on the upgrades, they actually were inadvertently spent out of the central services budget itself, and not out of this fund, um, and so these funds remain there, so what we're asking to essentially reprogram them, uh, to some other, uh, needed repairs in Memorial Hall, that would be paid for traditionally out of the O and M budget of the Central Services Department. Um, there's some other additional flooring and painting upgrades that need to be done, so, um, that's the reason for asking to now move this money into the regular, uh, Central Services budget.
Council Tacey.
So these aren't tailings left over from a job?
That's correct, yeah, and, uh, Mr. Pomerantz is here. He can explain to you the work that was done as part of the upgrades, if you need to.
And actually, accept a motion to recognize him, Pomerantz?
Accept the motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, this was a capital project. We had to replace the electric service coming into the rear Memorial Hall. Um, we thought we were gonna need outside electrical contractors to do the work, and it turned out we were able to do most everything using our in-house electric staff, and, as the mayor explained, the materials recovered out of the, uh, O and M budget for Central Services, uh, so we'd just like to sort of keep, take this money now and transfer it over for other work in Memorial Hall, but by doing it in-house, we did save a lot of money that we thought we'd have to go out, and we replaced the electric service that way.
That was my question. It was a cost-saving thing by doing it in-house.
As well, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Council LaBarge?
Yes, so this extra money that we have is gonna be used for doing what the request is, correct?
Interior renovations, so we're talking flooring, painting, uh, probably some electrical work inside the building, um, things of that nature.
Any further questions? Alright, the motions are made to recommend, uh.
Make a motion to recommend.
Well, it's already been made, so.
Oh.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I still approve. I know.
Uh, this is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, who we noticed is recognized, uh, that the council authorized payment of a prior fiscal year, uh, bill from FY 2013 for a boot allowance reimbursement for a DPW employee of FY 2014. Do you want to move it through, or do you want to hear from the mayor?
But we'd like to hear.
We'll recognize the mayor.
So, um, this is actually a, a similar, uh, fact pattern to some previous, uh, orders that we've put forward, where essentially a bill has come forward, um, that is an FY 2013 bill, uh, and of course, we've now closed FY 2013. You may recall, we had a bill in the assessor's office for some computer work at one of your previous meetings, and so in order now to pay this bill in FY 2014, we actually have to bring it before the council. So this is actually, um, a re, a contractual, uh, reimbursement of a DPW employee, uh, as part of their, uh, uniform and equipment allowance. Uh, they submitted it on time. It didn't get paid, um, correctly by the end of the fiscal year, so we, it requires a vote of the council to actually pay this and reimburse the employee.
Council Tacey.
How much money is this?
It's, uh, one, uh, 100 and, I think it's $50.
150.
$150, yeah, which is the, uh, again, contractual, uh, amount that, uh, the boot, for the boot allowance.
Thank you.
Why, what's, why are we authorizing $150? I'm just curious.
What's that again? We're just authorizing the payment of the bill.
Right, okay.
Um, because again, it's a bill from a prior fiscal year, um, and, and.
Okay.
MGL and DOR regulations require that if we're going to, um, pay something that was a 2013 obligation, it actually has to come before you.
I think part of the council's concern was if we were gonna be voting on every boot item, whether we would.
Not at all, no.
Okay.
Yeah, not at all. This is, uh, as you know, this is, I think, we voted now on, I think, $350 out of a, you know.
Right.
$76 million FY 13 budget, uh, so again, these are just some issues that can occur as the close of one fiscal year into the other.
Council Freeman Daniels, do you have a question?
Did someone get booted?
Oh. So said the lame duck.
They booted themselves, and now we have to reimburse them, that's how.
Okay, all, all those in favor?
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry, Council Tacey.
We're gonna have two readings of the council floor.
Um, we could, if you want.
It would be helpful, again, this is.
Yeah.
It's a request for two.
An accounting issue.
Okay, I just wanted, and same with the last one, the 10,000. Okay, thank you.
Um, there's a, so actually, we haven't formally put this, uh, recommended, so if you want to make.
To the council.
Yeah, so you moved to recommend, and you seconded, and, okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, okay.
Okay, there is a request on our financial order for two readings on that?
Right, when we get to the floor, we'll, we'll address that. Up next, a little steeper. This is, uh, upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, ordered that the $29,000 remaining for an appropriation on November 16th, 2016, for parking, painting garage stairwells from the parking receipts reserved for appropriation is no longer needed for that purpose, and is hereby reprogrammed to the parking garage waterproofing and stair repair project. Mayor, or David, do you want to speak to this? I'm not sure what we do with that respect, but why don't we just?
I would like to recognize the mayor, either.
Yeah, all those stand.
So essentially, this is, again, as has happened in the past, this is a capital improvement project that the council had appropriated and authorized money for. Um, there's residual funds left over from that project, uh, that was actually, uh, not completed, and now the, uh, uh, new department head would like to reallocate those to a more current project that is more, um, in need, and I can have, uh, Mr. Pomerantz explain that to you.
Do you have a question, Council?
Well, yes, I do, because there was a, a previous sum of 331,000, correct? So, on that capital project, that we used part of that money, all that has been completed, correct?
How long ago was this project you're talking about?
Seven, seven years.
Well, we approved 331,000 way back, what was it, in 2007?
This was probably a capital plan that you approved that had a number of different projects, and this is, uh, this was among those projects. Yeah.
This is in the FY 2007.
So on that order that you're referring to, that was an order on November 2nd, this one item is the stairwell painting project, which was itemized at $32,000.
Okay.
That's the one that, uh, reserved those funds for that project, and maybe you want to explain about that stairwell painting project and the more pressing project.
Right, so, subsequent to that, there was additional capital money allocated under the cap program for epoxy and waterproofing work. Um, that's our number one priority project that's gonna be going on right now. Um, that project started this fall, it's about six weeks in duration. That project is a little bit more money than the allocated capital line, uh, for the waterproofing and epoxy work. So, the request before you is to take some of that other money, and that would be applied towards the total lump sum of what would be the contract when we get to it for this work this fall. There will be stair work, but not the, the work that was intended under that 29,000.
Uh, Council Adams had a question.
So the, the painting still needs to be done, it's just no longer the top priority?
Exactly. There's a four-year phased pro, work program that's being developed right now, so the first year is the waterproofing and epoxy work. Uh, that's our number one priority, especially with winter closing in. Years two, three, and four will include things like painting the stair rails, uh, like other media work, epoxy work down around where the bridge is, that goes over to Thorns, uh, some electrical work, things like that, elevator upgrades, but the number one project and the number one need is to do the waterproofing and epoxy work, and that's what we're starting with now.
And I just want to commend, uh, Mr. Pomerantz, 'cause one of the things he did when we, uh, uh, put the parking maintenance under, uh, the, the, uh, control of Central Services is really go in and do a pretty in-depth look at the parking garage, and reassess what the capital needs are, um, and has now put together a, a four-year program that he just described, of which this is, uh, the, one of the top projects, um, and, and that's a, that's now a four-year maintenance schedule for the garage, so that we can make sure that those items are addressed. Um, it's a, it was a very expensive structure, uh, and it needs to be taken care of properly, so that we can make sure it lasts and is safe and performs.
Council Freeman Daniels.
Just a quick question. Um, reprogramming 29,200, but initially 32,000 was allocated, so $2,800, was that, was that, was that previously tried, would we use $2,800 to paint some of the stairwells, or?
Uh, we didn't actually, and I, and we will have to go back to that project of painting, um, uh, as, as Mr. Pomerantz described, so I believe that there had been some earlier attempts, uh, to, to bid that painting job, uh, that did not, uh, were not successful, and so that's what, part of the reason why the money was never expended. Uh, but for now, that's now moved further down on the priority list, and so we're now moving that ahead.
Right, I guess, the only thing I'm wondering about is where did that $2,800 go?
The $2,800 that's, that would be still sitting in that particular fund.
Are we gonna just leave it there?
We're gonna, we're gonna need to, uh.
There's only 29,000 of the original.
Okay, so this is the remaining money, uh, in that actual allocation. I, I misspoke. So there was, there was a small allotment, uh, that had been spent for painting.
Uh-huh, okay, that's, that's what I was.
Stop it.
Correcting on that.
Council LaBarge?
So this will actually drain that, uh, and, and cancel that out.
Council LaBarge?
Yes, um, I'm a little concerned, because we appropriated this money in 2006. Why wasn't it used, Mayor?
Again, uh, this, I think I was, um, probably sitting there and probably voted on the appropriation as a ward four counselor. Um, I can't, uh, it's difficult for me, I was not overseeing the department at that point. I don't know why that project, uh, was not carried out. All I can speak about is what we've done, uh, and so, and since Mr. Pomerantz has stepped in, uh, to really take a look at the garage, assess what has to happen, and then we've looked back at some of these already programmed projects and are now trying to reprogram them to fit with the new priorities for maintaining the garage.
Council Tacey.
Actually researched it at the time when it was approved, and it's an epoxy, it's a two-part, uh, paint next year that is manufactured, I think by the Clover Manufacturing Company in Canada, and it is a very, very quick drying epoxy. It went out to bid, I believe, twice, and nobody bid on it.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, I had spoke with one of the bidders, and they were interested, because he said it was a three swipe brush, one, two, and it was dry, and he couldn't guarantee. It's a difficult, it's a difficult material to use that was specked out, and, um, anyway, I remember it pretty well. It, they did go out to bid, and it never got bid. Nobody, nobody submitted bids for it.
Any other questions, uh?
Now that it is cooler, it might be, it might take longer to dry.
There you go, yep.
Um, any other further discussion? Yeah, uh, all accept the motion now, to the recommendation.
Move to approve.
Move to recommend, or second.
All those in favor recommending this council?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't know if it's noted on there, but if this would be one that we would like, again, for two readings, as we heard Mr. Pomerantz is trying to get that work underway, so.
This, uh, final item is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narcoits, ordered that, whereas the former Vernon Street School property located at 56 Vernon Street has been in continuous use since 1977, as a facility providing full-day, full-year head start and early care and education services for low and moderate income families, and whereas the continued lease of the property for the purpose of head start and early care and education services is an appropriate neighborhood use that provides a vital community and regional resource for low and moderate income children and their families. Now whereas Mass General Law 30B, uh, Chapter 16 requires a vote of the city council to surplus any interest in public property prior to its disposal, now therefore be resolved, the property formerly known as the Vernon Street School located at 56 Vernon Street is available for lease until 2023, and the city council directs the mayor to award and execute said lease with the following restrictions. The L C will be responsible for maintenance and utilities, and she'll make a minimum capital investment of 300,000 dollars in the building, HVAC upgrades during the duration of the lease, and the property can only be used for head start and early care and education, other related services by a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. All accept a motion to recommend?
I make the motion to recommend.
Second.
Seconded. Uh, Your Honor, you want to speak to this?
Certainly. Um, I included in the packet a memorandum to the city council, um, and I may just go, quickly go through that. Um, this is, of course, one of our former elementary schools, uh, located at 65 Vernon Street, uh, and, uh, in 1977, one of my predecessors, uh, three mayors removed, uh, North Hampton Mayor Harry Chapman actually executed the first lease on this property, uh, to then Hampshire County, uh, Hampshire Community Action Corporation, HCAC, uh, which, uh, began the, um, activities there, which have actually continued to this day, 36 years later, um, providing heads, head start services, uh, for, uh, low and moderate income, uh, children and families, um, in North Hampton and in the valley. Um, uh, and again, that's a, uh, an arrangement that has continued through Mayor Musanti, Mayor Ford, Mayor Higgins, and, uh, and, and through my administration. Um, and so, uh, a couple of things are happening. Uh, first of all, we are at a point where we need to, uh, renew that lease. Um, the building has some capital needs. The, the terms of the, of the leases that have come before this, um, require that Community Action, uh, may pay for the maintenance of the building, as well as utilities in the building, um, and they, um, have, have put a lot of, uh, care, uh, and effort into keeping a rather old building going. They've invested in, uh, painting classrooms and, and, uh, work on windows, uh, and all kinds of other things, but there's some, a couple of major issues right now. Uh, the roof system is failing, uh, and needs to be replaced, as well as the, um, ancient boilers, uh, or boiler, um, which, uh, is inefficient, uh, and, uh, and given its age, um, we don't know how much longer it will continue to function. So Community Action has received preliminary funding approval from Head Start for $200,000 in federal funding, uh, to make the, uh, capital investments in the building to address the roof issues. Um, they also have been working, uh, with the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, um, through a special program for nonprofits that has, um, it allows them to have access to approximately 125,000, which will allow them to replace the oil burner and the steam heat distribution system, uh, in the building with a more modern, energy-efficient. In order to do that, uh, they are, they will need a longer lease period, they need a lo, longer site control of the building in order to be eligible for the type of grant that would make that kind of capital investment in the building. So what I'm proposing, uh, and again, under Chapter 30B, uh, I have to, we essentially have to resurplus the building and make it available. Uh, we have to do an RFP for a lease on the building, um, and, and of course, we would be structuring that RFP, um, uh, to, to continue, uh, the relationship that we've had with Community Action, similar to what we did when we extended the lease, uh, for the Survival Center at the city's facility on Prospect Street, similar to what we did when we, when we extended the lease, uh, for the South Street School and the Community Music Center. Um, so, uh, so what I'm proposing is that the council take that vote under 30B, uh, to allow the city to award a new lease, uh, through 2032, uh, which would allow access to those federal funds, uh, federal and state funds, to make the needed upgrades to the facility and to continue to keep operating, uh, the programs that they operate, um, in the building. We have some guests here tonight who can answer specific questions about the programs that happened there, and I, I did a summary of them, uh, in my memo, uh, the early care and child, uh, early care and education, full-day, full-year programming, um, Head Start Home Base Visiting Program, WIC, Healthy Families Reach Program, uh, serving children with special needs, uh, Mother Woman Support Group for New Mothers, and a YWCA Supervised Visitation Program for Separated and Divorced, uh, Families. We have with us tonight, and, uh, a not, uh, Vision Fund, who is the director, um, at the, at the site. Uh, we also have Wendy Mullin, who's the Business Operations Director, uh, for Community Action, and we also have Barbara Black, who is the city's, um, Early Childhood Education Coordinator, um, who I believe submitted a memo to you, uh, about the importance of this program, and how it complements the work that we're doing as part of the public schools. Um, as I closed in the memo, I respectfully recommend that the city council approve my request, uh, to advertise and award a new lease on the Vernon Street School facility. This proposed lease renewal would facilitate significant outside capital investment in a city-owned facility, reducing its future operating costs while increasing its current, its future value. More importantly, this proposed lease renews the City of North Hampton's 36-year commitment to ensuring access to Head Start and early care and education services at this facility, representing an incalculable investment in the lives and futures of disadvantaged children in our community. So with that, I will entertain questions. Uh, again, we have guests from, uh, Community Action.
Okay, and we have, we have questions from Council Adams and Council LaBarge.
Okay.
Um, Mayor, will the, will the maintenance and utilities be the total compensation?
The, um, the.
Consideration?
The leases that we've had in the past, um, have been for a dollar a year, uh, and so, yes, that is correct. And one of the things that, um, it's important to point out about how Head Start funding works, um, Head Start agencies are required to, uh, provide 20% of their funding through in-kind, uh, contributions, and so what is quite common, like an arrangement like this, is that this, this lease arrangement is counted towards that in-kind, uh, contribution to Head Start. Um, the City of Westfield, the City of Agawam, uh, City of West Springfield, Greenfield, Amherst have similar arrangements where Head Start Services operate out of, uh, city or town facilities under similar arrangements. Um, and again, it's part of the Head Start, I think the ethos of that is trying to make sure that there's a local commitment and investment in these services, which are so vital to the community, so that would be the arrangement, that's been the arrangement, that arrangement would continue, although I have specified, um, in this order, uh, that in addition to that maintenance and utilities, they will be making a minimum capital investment of $300,000 in the building and its systems during the duration of the lease, uh, which, again, I think is a significant, uh, investment in a, in a city-owned property.
Council LaBarge and Council Freeman Daniels.
So, if I'm understanding, Mayor, of what you said, that dollar a year, that would be gone, be, they won't pay for that dollar. What they're gonna pay for Head Start would be 200,000, I think you said, in capital funds, right, to make those needed repairs, and then also another 125,000 from the Massachusetts Clean Energy, correct? So that will be their full responsibility of taking care of the maintenance at Vernon Street.
Is what, and again, as well as continuing to do the day-to-day maintenance, um, on the building, as, as well as, uh, paying the utilities, uh, the electricity, the, um, gas, uh, or electric, rather, um, uh, oil, although that may be changing, um, and, uh, and we did a, um, a site visit, uh, this week, uh, so that the property committee could go take a look at it, and we met with their, the folks who've been, uh, taking care of the building and who maintain it, um, and so, yes, that would continue. Um, and these investments are investments that will be made, um, as part of their arrangement, uh, uh, as, as Lee sees in the building.
I've been in that building a couple of times, and the program is a wonderful program, and how anybody could ever say no to this Head Start program, it is probably one of the best in our city. They do so much for, uh, all kinds of diversity, and especially people with disabilities, and I'm gonna support this 100%. I supported it way back, and I think it's great that they are going to go ahead and stay here in the City of North Hampton.
Council Freeman Daniels.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, you, um, maybe you might have misspoke when you said that you were asking for the lease to go until 2032?
I think I must have meant 2023. I meant a 10-year lease.
That's my.
Yeah, with my.
Sorry, little dyslexia there.
Any questions, Council Tacey?
Yeah, they've done a pretty good job of, they spent tens of thousands of dollars maintaining this building over a period of years, patching and, and everything. It's, it's a tough building to maintain, and, um, the, uh, the program is, is, I think, worth more to the community than to surplus the building for sale or some such thing as that. So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna support this, uh, but is it a dollar a year or a dollar a month?
Uh, I believe it's a dollar.
Dollar a year.
Yeah.
Pro-rated.
Okay.
Or actually amortized.
I was just curious, just the language, that was all.
Yeah, I believe that's what it's been in the past, so, um, yeah, and I would also add that, uh, I had the pleasure of, um, climbing up on the, the roof with, uh, Council Tacey and Counselor, uh, Dwight, as part of the tour. and Council Dwight as part of the tour that we did to see exactly the issues that have to be replaced up there, so we can avoid...
Dressed pretty much like that?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. And, because again, we're trying to protect the outer envelope of the building and prevent mold and infiltration and some of the other issues, because they have very strict standards in terms of running a facility that they're running. So we want to make sure that we avoid that.
One thing that is, I think, really in need of recognition is the fact that they have remained with the WIC program, or WIC has stayed there, as we've been lost most everywhere else.
Any other questions? I just want to add that this is a legacy structure, and its legacy has been education and providing for the community. And this is a part of that continuing. And actually, as Council Tacey referred to, with sequestration, WIC Head Start in particular has been brutalized. And the fact that we are still able to receive the superior services that are offered there, that this building would continue in the way that it was originally intended by the people who built it, is carrying on a mission of providing for families, and particularly families in need in this community. And I agree with the councillors who have expressed their affirmative pleasure on this vote. So with that, we will proceed with the vote. All those in favor recommending this?
Recommend. Aye.
Aye, thank you. I'm not sure if we noted it on the agenda or not.
That's two readings?
I was gonna ask for two readings, because we're attempting to access some funds, federal funds, in the new fiscal year, or I should say, Community Action is. And we have a 30, we have to put this out for 30 days. The RFP has to be out on the street for 30 days. And so, it would be helpful to, when it comes to the council floor, I should say.
And Barbara, just to let you know, we did receive your memo and read it. Thank you very much.
I just forgot to send it to you.
Jean and then Mary Ann.
I was wondering if we're gonna keep you here for the rest of the meeting, or would you like to speak now, and who's ever here from the program?
Barbara Anat, you're welcome to speak if you'd like.
I have an nod.
Kind of gilding the lily at this, but it's, yeah.
Well, thank you very much. Council members and Mayor, and it was really a pleasure to host you the other day. I was a little trepidatious about you going up on the roof and, you know, with, you know, half your government there, but...
Ultimately, wouldn't have been our liability anyway, so you would have been...
Well, you know, but I am a resident of North Hampton, so who cares? Really, thank you very much. And I want to say that I think one of the things that a lot of people don't know is that we serve children from birth to five in that building. So we have really little babies. We have two early Head Start classrooms that serve children birth to three. We have three preschool classrooms that serve children three to five. As Council Member Dwight correctly said, we just had to deal with the most devastating cuts in the history of Head Start since 1965. Our agency lost approximately $300,000. This year, we had to cut 129 slots throughout our service area. We laid off about 68 staff. We've been able to rehire about 48 of them through a restructure in different positions. So we are alive, and we are doing fine, and we have not compromised quality. And our site at Vernon Street is very, very dear to us. It's our only site in North Hampton. We did have to close our site at the North Hampton High School recently, as you may know. So we are just thrilled. We are pleased that we were able to secure this money from the Office of Head Start, having them recognize the importance of the building and of the services we provide. We do, I think, a lot for the very poorest of our neighbors and our communities. We serve families at 100% of the federal poverty level, which is, I think, something like $14,000 for a family of three or four annually. So I really just want to thank you. If you have any other questions, we, our Head Start program runs in three counties, but this is our main base in Hampshire County, so.
Thank you, Anat.
Thank you.
Thank you for the tour. Any other questions in finance?
Can we all, I want, Barbara, you just wanna say?
Yeah, I just, I just want to, sure.
Step up to me.
Because I can, I can never resist. Okay, where do I want to be?
And Ms. Pye, you're right here, fine. You're right here at the front.
Okay, so basically, just that, I mean, clearly, you, all of you received an article, the mayor sent you the article by James Heckman about the value of early childhood education. And I mean, you could be sick of me saying it to you, because I say it to you constantly, but he, and he said it a lot better than I could ever say it, that we have to invest in our young children. And everything, listening to all of you talk tonight was just very affirming and inspiring. And I wish the rest of the world could see that this is what we have to be doing. And Head Start and, you know, the early childhood programs that have been there for the last 36 years have made a huge difference. I mean, really, I was trying to calculate how many kids have been through the building, really like thousands. And many of them are grownups, and many of them now have kids in our schools. And then, you know, many of the kids from Head Start come to our schools. And the fact that they've been there really helps them do better and begins to address the resource gaps that exist. So, we're all thinking the same thing.
Well, you've served as an inspiration in that level too, anyway, so thank you very much. And that's it for finance, right?
Actually, there's one other...
Yep, there's one other item. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is, yes, that's right, and a very exciting item. This is upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkwitz, and you guys have photos that they sent to you. This is an order that the council surpluses the following parking spaces for the use of trash disposal containers. This is the Masonic Street Lot, two spaces, Armory Lot, two spaces, Strong Lot, two spaces, Fazano Lot, one space. And make these spaces available for the lease of a five-year period FY 2014 to FY 2019. I'll accept a motion to recommend. In finance, hello? Councillors, you want to rec?
I'll make a recommendation.
Okay, so there's a recommendation. And Councilor, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
So this is actually analogous to what you just did, which is again, under 30B, because these parking spots are the property of the city. And in order for us to continue leasing them to the folks that have dumpsters on those spots in the selected areas, we have to go through this procedure of the city council affirmatively surplusing it and saying that we can put them out for lease. Folks who go to the Armory Street Lot may notice these dumpsters, and they help serve the city as well as businesses in the downtown area. And so, that's the purpose for having to come back to you as part of a renewal of these leases.
Council LeBarge?
So Mayor, this is under a five-year contract?
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Council Freeman?
So these are leased, these are arranged with the providers, and they pay the city?
Yes, they do. They pay, they pay us for these spots, yes, and to put the dumpsters there. And it serves a valuable purpose, particularly for many of our Main Street businesses, and as well as the city has access to some of them as a collection point for the downtown trash collection that our subcontractor does.
Do you, this isn't, you don't require an RFP for this, you just...
I believe we, I believe the dollar amount is not, no, because of the dollar.
Because of this money. So it's just run through your office, basically?
But it is a lease, so effectively, it's a lease, so it is run through Central Services.
It's run through Central Services, okay.
And so, but because it's a lease, it still requires this vote by the council.
Just, my other question is, my other question really pertains to recyclables. Are we, is part of the lease conditions that the businesses are not disposing of recyclable containers?
I don't know.
Because it's part of the, it's part of the city's ordinance that that is the case, so we have to make sure that this is happening.
I'm gonna have Mr. Palmerance address that, because he knows that in more detail.
So we have both do so with the Strong Avenue Lot, and we have alternative recycling systems at the other lots. Also, they have compacters for cardboard-related items. They have barrels for the trash itself. And then there are bins or rolling dumpsters, so to speak, for the recyclable materials, glass, cans, things like that. So the bid people, the pedal people, the parking maintenance people, and the businesses surrounding those compacters and dumpsters, put their material in there, depending on which, what they're dumping.
All right, thank you.
Counselor, I think your concern was that we were just putting a dumpster there, and people were putting everything recycling and everything, so does that answer your concern? Okay.
I was curious about whether we'll have two readings on this.
Is there a request for two readings on this?
I don't see why we wouldn't.
There's no, there's, it's not an urgent matter, but it would, again, it's an administrative matter. These dumpsters have been there for many years. It's just we have to renew this lease every five years, so.
Bring it up.
It would be helpful, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions relative to the dumpsters? All those in favor recommending this to the council, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that, with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn finance.
Turn to her.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
All right, so now we're back into the meeting, meeting, as it were. First up, this is the financial order for the $10,000 Memorial Hall electrical upgrades to go towards Memorial Hall flooring and painting upgrades.
Move to approve it.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Are we gonna roll call? I'm sorry. My bad.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Council LeBarge? Yes.
Council Schwartz?
Yes.
Council Sefter?
Yes.
Yes.
Your motion to suspend rules?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Second it.
Wait, we need that for financial order one?
No, he didn't say he wanted a second.
I asked.
Yes.
All right. Well, there's a discussion on that, about the appreciation of that?
No.
Yeah, okay, so there's a motion to suspend rules.
It's good that the law's gonna catch up to the work, so.
Yes, okay. All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? All right, I'll accept a motion. Oh, we have the motion to put it on, I'll accept a motion.
Move second reading.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Schwartz?
Yes.
Council Sefter?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, this is the boot allowance reimbursement for the DPW employee. This is also a request for two readings.
Move to approve it.
There's been a motion and another motion. Council LeBarge, Council Tacey, and any further discussion on the boots?
Roll call.
It's, by the way, it's boots plural, two boots.
There are two boots?
One boot, right?
I thought there was just one boot.
Okay. It's just written, two readings for one boot.
It's one allowance, the boot is a...
Roll call, please. Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Schwartz?
Yes.
Council Sefter?
Yes.
Council Thompson?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes. Suspend rule 14.
All right, this time, Council LeBarge.
Second.
Council Tacey was the second. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Motion for second reading?
Just like it.
All councillors? Let's all play the same game. This is a motion to be made for second reading. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, I actually really don't know what's going on here.
We're now voting in second reading.
Yeah, but I don't know what we're allowing.
We're allowing them to pay the bill.
The bill for boots.
Yes.
It doesn't matter about the boot, it's just we're paying an FY 2013 bill in FY 2014.
Which requires our authorization.
Yes. That's a mass, that's mass general law that we're required to do that.
If you didn't say anything about boots, we'd be fine.
Yeah. Pretend it's the computer bill that you approved two weeks ago for the assessor's office, I'm sorry.
Safety gear.
This is gear, this is footwear.
Exactly, exactly, yeah. Like steel toe, steel toe boot that someone is working in the water sewer department or...
Speaking with his TPC hat on, he thought it was a boot on someone's car.
We can arrange that.
Counsel Adams?
It's just that they're contractually obligated to pay the cost of the boots, right? And the workers submitted it.
Exactly.
And it just, by oversight, wasn't paid, and now it's gone to the next fiscal year.
All those officers you saw tonight have similar allowances for uniforms and boots and such.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I think we've wrestled that to the ground and choked it to death, so I'll accept a roll call.
Council Freeman Daniels? Aye.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes. Go forth and pay your bills.
Yes.
Okay, we've moved beyond that controversy, and now we're up to the financial order for the reprogram of $29,200 for the parking, painting of the garage, stairwells to the parking garage, waterproofing and stair repair project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Schwartz? Yes.
Council Sefter?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Move to approve, I mean, suspend rule 14.
Second.
Any further discussion on suspension rules? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. So what happens next?
Roll call.
Someone called?
Second reading.
Thank you very much. Is there been a second on that?
Second, the second reading.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Just as a side note, it would be interesting to know where that $2,800 went from the initial approval to now.
We can look that up and provide that information for you tomorrow, certainly.
It doesn't have to be tomorrow.
Okay, we'd like it to. After we put the boot on your car.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Schwartz?
Yes.
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 Council Boyd?
Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Yes.
This is, and then next up is the authorization for the mayor to lease the Vernon Street School property.
Move to approve. Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Sefter?
Yes.
Council Tacey?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
Second.
Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and...
Two, second reading.
Second.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Council Tacey?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Carney?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Council Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Council LeBarge?
Yes.
Council Boyd?
Yes.
Okay, and this financial order, this is the second reading, uh, this is the rescission of authorization of the city to borrow $535,000 for the purchase of property on Cole's Meadow Road.
Move to approve. Second it.
Any further discussion on this? Roll call on this, please.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge? Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
This is also a second reading, this is the transfer of $8,661 from the FY 2014 Reserve for Personnel, FY 2014 Board of Health Permanent Salaries to fund additional hours per week for the public health nurse.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, any further discussion? Um, as you recall, this is the agreement with Amherst, no longer holds for community nurses to offset that. Um, so, uh, we'll do the roll call. I know, yes, it's the health one, so.
I went first last.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge? Yes.
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 Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Next up is the authorization to purchase or acquire, to expand Broadbrook Greenway, this is also second reading.
Move to, move to approve.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Do you have a motion?
Oh, Counsel Adams, Inspector.
Second, second.
I'm sorry.
Adams made the motion, Specter seconded.
Right.
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge? Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Thompson?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge? Yes.
Counsel Schwartz?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Aye.
Counsel LeBarge?
Yes.
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 Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Spector?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Carney?
Yes.
Counsel Boyd?
Yes.
Counsel Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Okay, now we move into orders and ordinances, that's the, that's the financial orders, and coming up now, um, well, believe it or not, this is the warrant for November 5th, 2013 biennial municipal election. It's on the recommendation of City Clerk Wendy Maza, order that the biennial municipal election in the city of Northampton for the choice of municipal officers be held on Tuesday the 5th of November 2013 in the several polling places designated by the city council as follows. Ward 1 precinct A and B in Jackson Street School Auditorium, Ward 2 precincts A and B in Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Gymnasium, uh, Ward 3 A and B in the senior center great room at 67 Con Street, uh, Ward 4 A and B also in the senior center great room at 67 Con Street, Ward 5 precinct A in Florence Civic and Business Building at 90 Park Street, Ward 5 B is Smith Vocational Agricultural High School Gymnasium, Ward 6 A and B is at the Robert K. Finn Ryan Road School, uh, precinct A in Ward 7 will be at John F. Kennedy Middle School Community Room, and Ward, uh, Ward 7 precinct B will be in the lead school gymnasium lower level. The polls will be open at 7 o'clock in the forenoon and close at 8 o'clock in the evening of the said day, and all such orders will, will, within the said hours in the wards in which they are individually entitled to vote, give in their votes for mayor for four ensuing municipal years, for the city clerk for two ensuing municipal years, for two councils at large for the two ensuing municipal years, for one council from each of the seven wards of the city for the two ensuing municipal years, for two members of the school committee at large for two years from the first Monday of January 2014, for four members of the school committee to serve for two years from the first Monday of January 2014, one to be taken from the inhabitants of Ward 1, one from the inhabitants of Ward 3, one from the inhabitants of Ward 5, and one from the inhabitants of Ward 7, for three superintendents of Smith Agricultural School to serve for two years from the first Monday of January 2014, for one elector under the Oliver Smith will for two years from the first Wednesday of May 2014, and for two trustees under the will of Charles E. Forbes for four years from the first Monday of January 2014. Accept a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Um, this will be the first, uh, general election under our new charter, I believe.
That's true.
So, that's, uh, it's a very exciting time here in Northampton.
Geez, I didn't make it sound very exciting, but you got to your pride in the face. It's kind of hard to spit all that out in some...
Why don't you jazz it up for a second?
Next time we'll do it with a harmonica break.
It wouldn't be that exciting, I thought, I would have stayed for it.
But you're right, you're absolutely...
You can't handle all the excitement.
This is, this is the first election under the new charter, and, uh, it's reflected in that, in, in the terms, particularly in the mayor and in the school committee, you'll see. So, um, yeah, we, we, uh, we seem to be pulling this off, this, we're actually making the charter work, so I'm grateful for that.
Any further discussion? Um, this is going to have a roll call, too, so.
It does?
No, it doesn't need a roll call.
You don't have to roll call, it's...
It's in order.
Do we? Oh, yes, it's money, it's money.
All my, all my counselors have informed me that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries, that's, uh, that's first reading.
Good.
What's that? Yes, Counsel?
Yes, um, I'd like to make a motion that we could suspend the rules, suspend rule 14 and do two readings on this, so we can let Wendy go ahead and move on and do what she has to do.
Third.
Motion's been made to suspend rules, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll accept a motion for the second reading.
So moved.
Second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. This is an authorization for the mayor to file petition for special legislation, Ray, the Lilly Library retirement exclusion, this is first reading, of the Northampton City Council hereby authorizes the mayor to file with the general court a petition for special legislation in accordance with amendment article 2, chapter 8 of the Massachusetts Constitution as follows. Notwithstanding the provisions of any general or special law to the contrary, the city of Northampton Retirement Board may exclude Charlotte Carver and Mary Ann Touri, or Tourji, employees of Lilly Library, an employing unit, uh, recent, until, uh, an employing unit recently added to the Northampton retirement system, for mandatory membership in the retirement system based upon their unique individual circumstances and the likelihood that they will not be eligible for a potential pension benefit. And the mayor is still recognized and can speak to it.
Okay, so this is an interesting story.
Sure.
So, um, uh, when I got elect, shortly after I got elected and, and met with, um, with staff at Lilly Library, one of the things that came up in our conversations was a, sort of an anomalous situation where employees of Forbes Library are part of our retirement system, um, and, uh, employees of Lilly Library were not, um, and they had asked me to investigate that, which I did. And actually, under mass general law, uh, even though these are not city departmental libraries, mass general law indicates that free public libraries, which these two are, in which the city provides more than 50% of the funding, that the employees are, uh, eligible to participate and, and actually should be in the, in the city's retirement program. So, apparently, some past employees of Lilly had petitioned the retirement board, the Northampton Retirement Board, which is an independent body, um, and for some reason that had not been followed up on, I, I don't really know, it was in 1998, I believe, is when that happened. Um, so, fast forward to, uh, the spring, we went bef, uh, I petitioned on their behalf to the Northampton Retirement Board, um, they went ahead and realized that they should indeed include Lilly Library, and went ahead and did that, um, and then in a case of be careful what you ask for, um, we determined, it then became apparent that two of the long-serving full-time employees, the director, Mary Ann Tourgey, um, and Charlotte Carver, uh, were in a situation where they had been paying into social security for the last seven or eight years, and to go now into the retirement system would actually be disadvantageous to them because there's no way that they could buy back those years into the retirement system because they've already paid into social security and can't get the money back, can't back the money out of social security, and, um, they won't actually serve long enough to be vested in the Northampton retirement system, because you need 10 years to be vested. So, so what they're, so now, in order to exempt them from being put into the retirement board, uh, system, and, and all future employees would go into the system, but because of their special circumstances, um, you know, had it been available to them when they first started being employed, um, they would have done it, they would have gone into it, this would be a moot point. So in order to do that, it actually requires special legislation, a special legislative exemption, um, from be, participating in the, in the retirement system. So, that's the reason why this takes a, a act of the legislature in order to now, we've, we've corrected an error that has gone on since, uh, for a while, uh, but this is one of the sort of side effects of that that we need to correct moving forward. So that's the purpose of petitioning the legislature.
Uh, and I would like to send them that boot bill as well. Counselor Adams is next, and then Counsel LeBarge.
Um, so does, um, article 2, section 8 of the Massachusetts Constitution allow the mayor to file directly with the general court as opposed to requiring a member of the legislature?
Um, you know, the, the practice has been, and what, I talked with Representative Kokot about this, um, they like to have a vote of the, uh, of the typical authorizing body in the city before they move forward with these things, so mayor and city council, or in a town, they like to have the select board vote on these things. Um, and so that, that was his recommendation to us, and we're just following that protocol. Um, I don't know the specific, I suppose I could request, I, I think actually individual citizens can petition, uh, their legislators to file legislation on their behalf, and they certainly can. In this case, because we're essentially, you know, anytime they're asking that one city or, or city employees of one city are exempted from something that all other city employees are under, I think they want it to go through the, the, the authorizing body of government and have a vote on it, um, so that there can be no questions about it for the legislator, uh, and with his colleagues as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Counsel LeBarge, and then Counsel Carney.
How many years mayor on both of these?
I guess not, 2007.
So Charlotte since 97, uh, Mrs. Carver, 97, and Mary Ann Tourgey since 2011.
Seven.
Seven, excuse me, 2007, yeah. And again, they've, they've, they've paid into social security for all those years, and they can't buy back those years, um, and so, they actually then came to us and said, you know, thank you for doing this for our employees, but we would actually like now to stay where we are, um, so that's the reason.
Counsel?
And I, I'm not going to second guess their request, although I'm very confused by it because, um, even though they've paid, they've paid into social security for those years, um, they can buy back, they can also buy back the time for their city of Northampton. And if you've got, uh, and...
Can't.
They can't buy back the city of Northampton time?
No.
Oh, I own, okay, I, I just know where it's been done in the past, so it might be.
Susan, do you want to speak to that?
You, you can buy back time, but it's only time that you've worked for a municipality that you weren't paying into social security, so you might have been an elected official in another community or some...
Just bring up the example of the former director of the Academy of Music, who had 20 or 30 years already been paying into social security and then was allowed to buy in and then drop from the city retirement, but again, I'm not, I'm, I'm not going to...
I sit on the retirement board and the academy is not eligible for membership in...
We made an exception for this one person, if those, if anyone remembers...
The special act was never enacted, we vote, this council voted on a special, a similar act, piece of legislation, I don't know that it was ever enacted.
Oh, but, um, but that was our intent at the time?
It was, and it would have required, I believe it would have required a buyback, but he wasn't actually eligible to be in the Northampton retirement system. So I'm not, so that may have been what made the legislation problematic.
Okay, all right, it seems too complicated to get into the details here tonight, but you're right, this does seem like it's a...
Counselor Freeman Daniels and Counselor Tacey.
I also share confusion over this, and I'm inclined not to support it. The reason that I'm curious about it is that I wonder what retirement system the city would then provide for these two employees. Would they continue to contribute to social security?
And that's what the, that's what the special law would exempt them from mandatory membership, because you are, if you are a city employee, you're traditionally, you're required to be part of the municipal retirement system.
Right, but would the city then be, as the employer, would the city then contribute to social security on the half of these two individuals?
We are not the employer. Lilly Library is its own employer, just like Forbes. We're not, we are not the employer of the employees at Forbes, nor are we the employer of the employees at Lilly, which is, I think, another reason this fell through the cracks over the years, because these employees do not come through our HR department, they aren't oriented, they are eligible for health insurance by virtue of mass general laws saying if you provide more than 50% of the support to a free public library, the employees of that library are eligible for health, group health insurance, and the retirement system. But technically, they are not, they are never and never will be our employees.
All right, so who, then, would they contribute, would the employer, being Lilly Library, who receives mostly funds from the city?
Yes, Lilly would be the ones making those contributions.
And they would contribute to social security?
Yes.
Is that the alternative?
That's how they have it.
They would opt out of this system and contribute to social security instead?
And they budget.
If you look in the, if you look in our budget, yeah, they budget $14,000 for Medicare and social security, or that's what they've been budgeting in the past.
And Forbes has the same.
And Forbes has the same, so they...
So these two individuals want to continue to stay on social security?
Yes.
Their employer believes that it's okay for them to stay on social security?
Again, given the circumstances, yeah.
Municipality has to. Okay, well, that's a little bit of a different story, I see, that it's possible.
I don't know, did they submit letters, I can't remember if they submitted any letters themselves or emails? We can certainly try to get you some...
It is, my knowledge of the system, end of my job in the real world, is, contributes to the fact that it is indeed possible that they could suffer a financial penalty for enrolling in the pension system. Although I actually don't think it would be very, very much, but everyone has different circumstances, and in this transition, then I can, I can understand trying to file this petition.
Counselation, then Counselor Kearney.
I've actually discussed it with Charlotte, and I intend to support it. It does create a hardship for her. I don't know the other person, but I intend to support it.
I think that in both cases, they're, it could be just, they're within 10 years of retirement age, and so if they started today in the Northampton retirement system, they wouldn't reach the 10 years needed to be vested in the system, to be, so they'd be, so it would be more beneficial for them to continue on their current path of paying into social security, which is what they've done to date. So I think that's what their concern is about.
Again, the question for me is why they can't buy back, and so, and...
We'll research that. We'll research that, because I think there'd be an issue of, I don't know that you're allowed to pay into a municipal system, and also the issue of the social security withholding going into their social security account. You could buy back, but you couldn't undo the social security piece of it. And Counselor Freeman Daniels may be able to describe that better.
Yeah, like I said, this is, in my other, wearing my other hat, there is a, there is a provision for other public service provided that allows for buy-in, or buy-back provision. But each retirement board has their own rules, but the, and so this would be a question for the Northampton Retirement Board. But the general, sort of, the general rule of thumb is that if, if you were contributing to any other publicly funded pension system that you become vested in, and in this case, social security would be that one, then you would not be able to also buy that time back, even if it were public.
But we'll, we'll try to clarify that. I know both of these individuals have talked to their retirement board, and they've talked to the planning folks about it, and they've, they've requested this, so...
Yep, okay, that's fine.
Any further discussion?
I just want to point out that even if these two, if the legislature fails to approve this, that the individuals who contribute to the retirement, Northampton retirement system, if they don't become vested, would be eligible to refund their contributions with interest upon their retirement. So it's, it's, the real, the real problem here would be the lack of years in social security, not the, not the failure to vest. And, you know, given that most people's highest earnings are when they are right before they retire, social security, there may be a shortfall that we would subject these employees to if, if they were to contribute to the pension system instead of social security.
This is the first reading.
Still moved.
Specter LeBarge. And all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? First reading. This is the surplus of seven parking spaces to use for trash disposal containers for the five-year period FY 2014 to FY 2019.
Still moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Do you want to read some of this?
Yes.
Can we take a roll call on this, please?
You gotta do a roll call.
No, just majority reconsideration for a roll call on the first reading.
First reading, okay, roll call, please.
Yes.
Counselor Tacey?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Kearney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
We'll just spend two...
It says spend Rule 14.
All right, motion second. Made and seconded by Adams, Tacey.
Roll call.
And, okay, so...
Move to second reading.
This is a motion, this is a second reading, thank you.
Second, yep.
Okay. The, any further discussion? Okay, this is a call for a roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Kearney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is an ordinance, this is for parking prohibition and parking prohibited at all times on Bates Street. This is the first reading, this is, be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton, City assembled as follows, it's Section 312-1-102 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton. Massachusetts be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Parking prohibited at all times, Bates Street, Easterside, from .188 feet northerly of the Norwattic Rail Trail Central Line to .334 feet northerly of the Norwattic Rail Trail Central Line. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion on this?
Briefly, this is for the private school that has installed a pickup on Bates Street, and as per their site plan review, they agreed to make no parking zone, they agreed to actually numerous infrastructure improvements, which you should drive by, it's quite nice there, they've got benches and a new sidewalk, but also no parking for the, for the pull off.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, I'm sorry, yes, it is an ordinance, good catch, thank you. Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Kearney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge? Yes.
Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
And now, the Northampton Center for the Arts Board of Directors, this is upon, excuse me, upon the recommendation of Counselor Owen Freeman Daniels, an ordinance of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, providing that the code ordinance of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended by revising Section 22-71 to 22-74 of said code, providing the Northampton Center for the Arts Board of Directors be ordained by the City Council of the City of Northampton, in the City Council assembled as follows, that Section 22-71 to 22-74 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts be amended so that such section shall read as follows. Northampton Center for the Arts Board of Directors delete in its entirety. Accept a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And discussion? Counselor Freeman Daniels, you were the sponsor, do you want to speak to it, or?
Sure.
Seems you're ready to go?
No, I'm just curious. I'll speak to it. This is, it was mostly housecleaning. The, I pretty much repeat what I said at the ordinance committee where this was reviewed. This is a, this is a, really a holdover from 30 years ago, when the city surplused the Sullivan School and made an arrangement to provide basically rent-free space to the Center for the Arts, and to really a new organization that would be a publicly interested organization, the Center for the Arts, that would be a space for art, art presentation, shows, and the production of art. And the initial laws stayed on the books all this time, even though they really weren't enforced, that the mayor would appoint the Board of Directors, subject to confirmation from the council. And at the time, I wasn't, of course, I wasn't really around back then, but, I mean, I was around, but...
Not around.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't really, I wasn't really around. And it made good sense. Here was a surplusing property, we were asking a new organization to assume a role that's in the public interest, it makes sense that the, that the council and the mayor would have some oversight regarding the Board of Directors. From the institutional memory of that organization, that was followed briefly by Mayor Muzanti, and then subsequently not by Mayor Muzanti, Mayor Ford, or Mayor Higgins, or Mayor Narcoitz. The board is now a self-sustaining institution, it's its own not-for-profit, and it no longer has the free space that the city provided for it. It's really an independent entity now, as it has been for over 25 years. And this is just cleaning up the ordinance to reflect that, and to show that, that they're not, that neither the board nor the city council is out of, or the, or the city is out of compliance with our own ordinances. And finally, this is not, and I didn't say this at the ordinance committee meeting, this is not to be construed in any way to be a show of non-support or abandonment of the Northampton Center for the Arts. I, I speak for myself, but I hope I speak for the entire council when I talk, when I acknowledge the tremendous benefit that they have provided to this city, that they continue to want to provide to this city, and that we, we gain from their, their existence and their, and their continued existence, and hopefully their very imminent establishment in a, in a building in Ward III. I understand that the closing for the Arts Trust property is the end of this month, so there's some housecleaning and some good news.
Counselor Tacey.
I do recognize this also as housekeeping, I would ask the council that sponsors it, would he have an objection to two readings on this tonight?
I mean, that we can also just wait, I mean, if, unless there's any possible community, I don't out-believe there would be, but it's just keeping with our general practice, I think we should.
I think, I would prefer that, unless it's really pressing, I would like to not get in the habit of doing two readings, but I actually understand, and I don't think there'd be much of a problem with it, but just to, just to remember that that is an exception.
And ordinarily, do the two readings lightly.
I know, no, I know you don't, that's why...
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor in first reading?
Aye.
Roll call, sorry, thank you, this is a roll call.
Counselor Kearney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Ford?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice President is keeping me on my toes. We, this is, this is upon the recommendation of the Department of Public Works and Transportation Parking Commission, and this is parking prohibited at all times on Meadow Street. This is first reading. This is, and I'll just read the prohibitions. This is, location is Meadow Street on the north side, .800 feet west from Corticelli Street to Spring Street. Any discussion on this? Counselor Freeman Daniels?
This was brought to us from the Department of Public Works at the Transportation Parking Commission. We were trying to encourage use of the parking lots at the field, at the gardens, and also trying to preserve the fledgling trees that are there. The major downside that we expressed at the Parking Commission meeting, I think, was the expense of the signs. There, there, there are going to be a lot of them, and we, I think that Counselor Tacey and I believe that it would be nice if we could break with our custom of placing the signs, what is it?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five feet apart, and maybe further apart, in order to save some money, because the area there is very flat, it's very straight, it's hard for us to, I'm sorry for speaking for you, Counselor, but it's hard for us to believe that a citizen would complain about not being notified about a no parking zone, given, even if we, even if the city extended the parking, rather, the signage. And it would save, it saves money, every sign costs money in this city, so it would be...
Is that a DPW?
It's really their, it's really their purview, but...
I mean, is, is the DPW, are they required by law for prohibition signs to have a certain spacing?
It's a really, it's really the, it's really best practice, given the, given, I think, I think kind of common law understanding of what constitutes notice, and what tickets, what, you know, what a parking ticket may or may not be enforceable. I think, I think the counselor and I agree that, that this is a special circumstance, given that it's straight, flat, and, and pretty easy to see. The, how many signs did we calculate it?
Twenty-two.
Twenty, yeah, there could be fewer, we believe.
We'd like to cut it down to like ten or...
Perhaps those of us on the joint committee with the DPW could bring this specific issue up, because it is just a policy, it's a policy by the DPW, and we could bring it up for this unique place, and say, could you possibly do half the signs, or whatever number it says.
Thank you.
Well, the vote, of course, is simply for the parking restriction, so, any further discussion on the parking restriction? Everyone understands the terrain and what we're talking about here, and, okay.
Also, the expense is about 500 bucks per sign.
Right, certainly a consideration, so, well, this will require a roll call. Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Spector?
Aye.
Counselor Adams?
Aye.
Yes.
We're up to a tabled motion from the last meeting, this is the Use and Dimensional Regulation of Central Business. Do you want me to reread it?
No.
I'll accept a motion then?
Move to amend.
All right. Discussion, please?
Aye.
Counselor Adams, you want to go first?
Sure, this is, I actually voted no on this in first reading, and I'm going to change my vote. And on first reading, I was kind of, I was concerned about just the, about this ordinance, which would allow for the potential reduction in available commercial space, but since, since last reading, I've discussed it with several members of the business community. I don't think there are many, but I think there are some who share that anxiety. And what I do like about this ordinance is that it provides an opportunity for more residential infill downtown, and I think that that's a laudable goal, and I think that'll contribute to the walkability of downtown, and I think it's sustainable, it's consistent with the sustainable Northampton goals. So I'm going to change my vote on this, thank you.
Counselor Specter.
Yeah, some of the counselors may know this, but it's interesting, and it's just a coincidence, that I think it's the Northampton Lodge, which has low-income housing, that it's being sold, and the new buyer who wants to do this, wants to add a number of units, wants to put retail in front, but wants to add mixed units to this and expand on the units. If we don't pass this, they won't be able to do that. It just happened to come up, there's no, for those conspiracy, conspiracy, conspirator theorists in the group.
Conspiracy theorists.
Conspiracy, thank you, I can't think straight right now. But I think it's important to do this, because in front will be the real, the retail space, but it will allow for, exactly for more housing in the back, and they plan to expand the housing if they can.
The motion was for the amendment, so this is, that would be this one with the striking...
This is the amendment.
This is the amendment.
And how's this different?
Yeah. These are the same.
This is from...
Okay, so this is, we're, this is the one, okay.
Who's issue?
Counselor Freeman Daniels, amendment. Now, I actually will read it, if you'll bear with me then.
Sure.
This is, with the amended language, any residential use above the first floor, and any residential use located to the rear of otherwise permitted non-residential uses that occupy a space of at least 20 feet deep, and any residential use on a property which does not abut on a public way or a public park, however not classifying rail trails as public parks, maintained by the city, and then struck from this, is home office occupation, and as, as home businesses are considered residential uses for these purposes. And that's the language that we're discussing and voting on. So, any further discussion?
Just, it's, we amended it twice, one, to include public parks as also something that you want to have a non-residential space fronting. And then the second piece, we asked to be modified from EDLU, actually, that's the cross-off for home office slash occupation. If you recall, that was a few months ago, but the idea was that, that some people might, might create their home office on the first floor and thereby call it commercial, and we want to try to avoid that, that gaming element.
Right, so this is keeping in the spirit of the legislation, already established relative to home businesses. Any further discussion? Counselor Tacey?
I think it's been kicked around enough, and I don't know, I think it's about as good as it's going to get, so I intend to support this this time.
Also, I just want to say, also, I'll make it quick, it adds more opportunities for any potential builder, developers in the roundhouse lot, just gives them more options.
Okay, this will be a roll call, two.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Just want to give a quick thank you to everybody that worked on this.
Did we, did we, is that the final vote, or is that for the amendment?
That was the final.
That was for the amendment, actually, that was for the amended language, that was the motion, you're right. So I'll accept a motion for the final vote.
Are we right? Is that right?
We need to take a funding...
Right, because we tabled it and it didn't have the...
Right, right. So the amendment's been approved, and now this is the motion for the final vote. So I'll accept a motion.
Approved.
Second.
Second, okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Mary.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
This is in second reading, this is to merge the Historic District Commission into the Historical Commission as meant.
Move to approve, second reading.
Second.
The motions are made and seconded, any discussion, any further discussion on this? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Counselor Shaw?
Yes.
Counselor Specter?
Yes.
Counselor Tacey?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Kearney?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge?
Yes. It's 9:30, and look where we are on the agenda. Now, I have, I have no updates. Is there any request for information? Counselor Freeman Daniels?
Just from the committee, we're still looking...